Riverboat, you're going to be getting more revenue in August. Riverboat revenue will be down. The riverboat revenues will be down from the fact that the casinos were closed so much last year.
That is in conjunction with Shambo and Sons where he got, he worked to shame through request. Shambo and Sons is also in pitch back well. So basically A and H cabinet came in, did his estimate, make sure that it was what he thought it needed. Not on paper, no.
It that includes Shambo and the other one?
Yeah, Shambo and Sons, yeah.
They had it contemplated together. So Shane is the one that's been working on that boiler and the one that put it in, he said, would if you notice that that's not the same paper I have at the top, except it wasn't. Not put in correctly?
Correct. The the main issue overall in general for over the year, whether it had been installed incorrectly. Shane has been working on this, the boiler system and the AC over 10 plus years. To make sure that what he was reviewing and assessing, the boiler situation, which it currently, thank goodness for March, because we were down to for many years only the backup boiler working to where in March, only a quarter of the backup boiler was working and on the water reports getting, we were using 200 some odd gallons a day, trying to keep that boiler running, just to keep it heated. Shane brought in Shambo and Sons and I have the other name, sorry, I forgot it. To review his assessment, to make sure that it was just and the boilers, there's nothing wrong. They're good boilers. The install was done incorrectly. There's no drainage for the primary boilers, there's no, it was under firing for so many years, which when they started doing the investigation on it and they started taking the blades out, the sections out of it, they were cracked. So there were six blades that were already cracked on the primary boiler. Shambo and Sons, they thought that Shane should just include the brand new boilers, but there's nothing wrong with the boiler, so why replace them? So there's a lot of times with, and I trust Shane's evaluation, like I said, it's a hundred and one thousand, 101,950, I forgot, nine, yeah, 950 dollars. But that's his worst case scenario. And plus with the type of fittings and stuff like that, materials getting more and more costly day to day. He's thinking that people were around in between open land in between like sixty to seventy, but just in cost of materials and stuff like that, he didn't mention the work to be completed, about a month, but he's got to change, he's got to move the boilers, replace the concrete pad and everything else like that and re-pipe it, so that way it's not running under fire. It'll run efficiently and accordingly from what we played years ago.
Could you just also caution the committee, do the score, that he might not be able to work on it, but the copper is going up every day, going up and that he could lock it in, stop hiring whatever you want.
Yeah, it says that the price is changing, they have to do, they got 24 hours when they lock in their price on copper. Unless I heard it's over five dollars now, pound of copper, so they're only getting to the day to lock in their price. After a day, the price changes.
Isn't it true that Shane really, what, almost donates a lot of time checking the boiler and talking to you?
True, I mean.
A lot of phone calls, you think he's just working?
Shane has been a savior to this courthouse for many, many years, I mean, before I was here. There has been numerous times since that day I got hired to currently, that if I had an issue with something, I'd call him on the phone, if he's nearby, if he could show up, assess it, fix it, you know, or whatever else, or advise what I need to do and not charge the courthouse on anything. And based on the hours that are raised from the other contractors that he brought in to help him do this evaluation of the assessment, Shane is right around max eighty dollars per hour, where she doesn't charge the courthouse, eighty dollars an hour, but and every, Shambo and Sons, their minimum is a hundred dollars an hour for labor. And the other person was right over a hundred dollars an hour minimum. But also in time, there's, Shane has been here numerous times and didn't charge us anything for repairs and assessments or anything.
So Shane is actually doing the work, not the other company?
Correct, correct. But like Shane said in the commissioner meeting, he doesn't know it all. So he brought in other sources to help him do the evaluation and assessment to make sure that how he's assessing it and what needs to be done, needs to be done correctly.
I just think it's always going to be two estimates, so you're really, not saying that he doesn't do the work in that, but it's funny how numbers change when you start bringing in bits of it.
Essentially, yeah, Shambo came in and looked at it, what he did, that doesn't sound like he's working with them.
No, he said that's fine, but I, I just think it's good to have two or three or four people bid on the work and talk a hundred thousand dollars, you can make a bid, it's a lot cheaper than what you know that you come here.
Well, the price here isn't.
We wanted the sheriff to get bids on the jail on a hundred thousand on a piece of work.
Yes, sir, I did. The thing is, when he explained himself, he's eighty dollars an hour, Shambo's over a hundred, the other guy that he talked to is over a hundred. I mean, when you add on all the pieces here, and Shane's been in working for donation time a lot of times. And we got a timetable where copper's going up practically every day or every week. You know, we can, we can push this down the road and do that if you want to.
I think we have data right now, it's just, we're just averaging.
And I'm saying, prepare yourself, prepare yourself and get some bids when you come out.
So is that what you're doing? If you get a bid from somebody that you do not know, and we might have the same problem that we've had now that it wasn't installed correctly.
And my biggest fear is that if we put something like this out for bid, and let me say that, even though this doesn't have Shambo and Sons in conjunction with A and H cabinet, like this paperwork and the documentation and the dollar amounts was done in conjunction with Shane and Shambo and Sons, which is the name of the committee, to make sure that the prices and everything else matched. My only fear is you put this out for bid, you get the lowest bidder, that's fine. What happens the next month when the lowest bidder is no longer around? You're taking a long-term person, contractor that's been working on the courthouse forever, that's local, shows up, donates his time, is there whenever I need him, from a phone call or in person, to you don't know who you're going to get. That's my only input on putting it out for bid.
So my question is, is this the same person that's been working on the boiler for a number of years?
Yes.
How many years?
Shane's been in and out of courthouse, 10 plus years, I think is what he said, working on the AC and the boilers and stuff like that.
So my, my personal question is, like, why is this just now being found out? Because we've put tens of thousands of dollars into that system and now we're saying this whole system's been wrong the whole time? And, and we're trusting, like, I'm trying to take all the people out of this, okay? So if I, if somebody worked on a system for 10 years and then now says, hey, you know, this is the time I've been working on for the past 10 years, it's been wrong this whole time, but now we got to change this, it, like, it doesn't make sense to me.
I think he has reported this a lot. I mean, he has, I mean, he, we had to replace different things, but he's talking about the things that are going to go bad in the future. Awesome.
Correct. And when Shane came in, it was initial, to fix an initial issue immediately. Shane was never, and there has, there, I found documentation where they had brought in, including the old bid sheets from when they did the new install in 2000, oh, I'm sorry, 94, 94, 95. 94 is when the bid started, 95 is when they did the install, new boilers. But Shane was never brought in to say, hey, you know, in your profession, do an evaluation of the whole entire system and where does it fail? And on top of that, when I asked him to do that, he brought in other entities that come in and helped him do that evaluation. When he found out, and due to, back when Cheryl was here, he did the investigation, found out that it was under firing for so many years, so he had to change out the gas lines, had a gas company here, and had to put a new step down in and everything else like that, just to fix that issue. But just in overhaul, he's never been specifically asked what needs to be done completely. Because even, he would tell you that for what the system and the courthouse need to be efficient or date equipment, he couldn't do it himself anyway, that would take a major contractor to come in to be able to do something like that. Because the AC issues that we have, the boiler issues that we have, this is just initial repair, and this repair here is not removing and getting rid of the boiler system that we currently have, the two of them, this is just repairing the issues that's causing them to fail. So they don't fail in the future.
Are you saying that Shane was here when they were putting in?
No, 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 Shane wasn't here, no. No, but I did find, but I found the documentation where it showed the bids coming across in 94 and 95 when it was put in.
Do you happen to know what the cost difference is for, like, doing a new system?
No, and I hate to, in side conversations with Shane and Shambo and Sons, when they were talking about the AC and they were talking about the boiler systems and to make it a little bit more efficient, I hate to say a number that they were discussing out loud, because it's not on paper. But there is better systems that are simpler that would work without, when the old system was removed, it would just use the same line holes and stuff like that, it's already existing from the system currently placed, that there wouldn't be any like massive drilling and, you know, and stuff like that, so.
The system's more efficient in this day and age?
Yeah, absolutely, they're, they're.
I hate to band-aid something, keep band-aiding, put it out.
And that, and that's one thing that Shane would, I know that, I hear that, I'm not right now. A lot of band-aids, like he said, like, or like I said earlier, he came in, he was, this was the issue, this is the problem, I need this fixed right now, that's what he was there for, and that's what he did. Shane has been, got us into help for me, some of these stuff that come in, because when I've seen going through old records and stuff like that, claims, and we've had contractors come in here and they've charged a $450 just to change out the thermostat, that takes 15 minutes.
Would it be an option if you passed out, would it be to give the system, see if our gear are there in the room, the ceiling?
Well, yeah, they may have mentioned, but almost 30 years. Which makes it probably look better than it is.
I think it's noisy, why is that? A lot of, when you, when you switch over to efficiency systems, you can stay running.
We'll probably be doing, we're going to doubt to do that.
And also the fact that we're.
Let me just decide where we're going to add on here, and by that time you can ask commissioners if they want to do that.
I think so.
And I'm just making a suggestion, and then maybe try to get another quote, so we can compare.
Do you want to inject it to go into King Kent? Yeah, I would add both.
Both. Thank you.
Okay, any other council action?
Well, I mentioned before, the commissioners are asking about what you want to, about getting a bid.
I would think it would be a smart thing to do since we just need to, but it's not my, not my place to do it.
Well, the commissioners in the past meetings have already given me the okay permission to, since estimates are free, to get, to get estimates on anything that's brought up that could benefit, so I can bring it up to them again. One, they've already given me permission to get the estimate.
They've given you permission to get for a new boiler?
Not, not for anything specific, but Steve said that.
All three of them are many.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm more interested in the cost benefit analysis, so if it's $300,000, 75-year ROI, probably not a great investment, but you know, if it's $300,000 and pays for itself in five years, that's a much better investment in capital, so that, that, I mean, because it, I think some of those energy consumption things are a little bit.
They can be, especially in the environment that they're placed in, correct.
Yeah, so a little squishy, but I, I would like to, I mean, that's, that's what I'm interested, people know. If it's a hundred thousand dollars for a band-aid or 300,000 dollars for a thing, what, what's that buying us?
Correct, I understand that.
I don't think that's where you need to be close.
Well, I just, not, not just one.
Yeah.
So the next thing that I want to hang on to new business, or additional business is we've retained Jackie's comment from AIC. Can you come up and chat with us a little bit? We need to establish our timeline and, if anyone has any questions for Jackie about the budget, I should, this will be a time.
I'm here to answer questions. I will put a plug in for that council meeting coming up on the Friday afternoon prior. There is a budget finance two class where they'll be going over calculation of the ARCA funds. There is a calculator out there and the state board of council will be at that meeting, at budget finance two meeting. We have Commissioner Bennett, Baker Tilly, and state board of council all in attendance. That's from one to four at the courtyard by Marriott on Friday afternoon. And then the council does have a networking event on Friday evening from, I think it runs from five to eight, where they serve some hors d'oeuvres and a lot of council people are in that room just discussing best practices in their counties. And it's really, probably, I don't want to say this, the thing, the agenda's not good, but you often learn more from just talking to other counties and their council people and how they do things and what they do than, than you learn in the media. So that opportunity is on Friday evening again at the court Bernard by Marriott in Plano. So anybody who needs help registering can call me because I set the event up for them on the website. But if you go to indiana counties.org, there's a place where you can click to register for the council meeting and then a place you can click to register for that budget. And I think that council meeting is only costing you maybe forty dollars per person for that Saturday class. How bill us? Yeah, yeah, you can just say, bill me later in the registration and we'll invoice the county and the county will send you a check.
I'll book the Friday, Friday afternoon.
The Friday afternoon one, we can invoice you also, and the county can send you a check. That one costs sixty dollars. Friday evening one goes along with the Saturday then. I can tell you, I'll give you just a little brief synopsis on kind of where, what I know about the upcoming things. The riverboat, I may come in earlier, riverboat revenue will probably be down this year because all of the casinos were closed for a short period of time. Several of the casinos are back and in full force and got back much sooner than others, some sooner than others. I can tell you Switzerland County was losing $30,000 a day revenue. The county was losing $30,000 a day revenue while Belterra was closed. And they're slow coming.
A day?
That's admissions. They were losing 30,000, they get, they get eight million dollars a year from the boat. Wouldn't like to live on the river? So, so they will lose, they will lose about $30,000 a day. Now, the county, I will say the county shares that with other local units out there, but if that is the county's, admissions money into, if they get admissions and then they get a percentage to pay.
Princess, Switzerland?
Switzerland County, yeah.
May been TV?
Yeah, because Belterra is one of the bigger of the ones down there. But it also was one of the ones that took the longest to get back. In fact, I was down there just a few weeks ago and they're still not back. They still have about a third of their machines not working because the socialists, so. But they're much better, their rev, but their revenues, where a lot of them were down only about 10%, they were still down about 30% on the money, on the money loss. So gaming revenue will be down, but that's not a huge amount anyway. Lit revenue again were, it's a by guess and by dolly, they, they changed the rules and stream again and that unemployment that everyone was getting is now not taxable. Last year when we were at budget time, that, that revenue was taxable revenue and so they didn't think there was a change. But we've watched the revenue coming in from the employers and that revenue is staying up there, it's just how.
Is federal and the state neither is taxable?
From the pandemic are not state taxable. When the federal government waived that off, because last year at budget time, that 600,000 was taxable income. But the lit revenues are still up by guess and by dolly. We're not expecting them to be too much. I constantly talk to David about talking to OMB, the Office of Budget Management, to ensure, we've got that 15% reserve sitting out there that they hold back for everybody for these type of instances. So I keep talking to him about using, making sure they use that to keep us flat. We may not grow in our income taxes like we thought we would, but if they could use that 15% to keep us flat and we not get a supplemental, I would rather be flat on my income tax than go down and then get a supplemental. It's just future budget.
When do we get these numbers then?
We won't get them until late. We'll work, we don't get those numbers usually until August or September. And they, they do a final certification first of October. But usually what they certify in August is where we are, is what we are. So we're going to be watching those.
So you think they'll hit August this year? Because it was what?
Well, last year though, remember, they took it out, you could file income taxes and the governor decided to allow it to go out to that point so that we didn't have the shortfalls. This year, he only took it out a month, so they're not extending anything. OMB has to have it to the Department of Local Government Finance by July 1 and they'll be sending out estimates August 1. That's where we are on those. But I don't think we'll see much there. They're anticipating levy growth at between four and 4.3. Is where they're anticipating levy growth, that should be coming out here in the next two or three weeks. And we'll want to compare that to our assessed value growth. But if we're building here, that's good. If we can keep those assessed values going at the rate of the levy growth.
If we want to, if we want to thaw and take our, is July the day?
Let me tell you what happens when you thaw.
Well, I, I, I don't.
Now, wait a minute, no, I want to, because, because Brown County thawed, and here's what's happened. When you thaw, you freeze your income tax where it is. That doesn't go away, that, you still have that levy freeze income tax portion. It stays where it is. And, and whatever you have in the growth there, that's where you stay. What's happened in Brown County is now they've got this revenue coming in, that's levy revenue, levy freeze revenue, that's now sitting in a pot, they can't do anything with it. It's just there because they can only distribute this much. Now they're out here in levy growth and assessed value growth and that, that money's sitting there and nobody knows what they're going to be able to do with it or when. It's sitting there waiting, it's the stabilization fund for when revenues drop off. Well, as it grows, we all know incomes go up and that growth of that levy freeze at, at the rate it is continues to grow. And so now they, they, two years now, set money in the stabilization fund. Even when the supplemental comes in, the levy freeze money has to go into the stabilization fund because they're collecting more every year than what they are paying. So they would, they're going to at some point in time have to flip their levy rate down to equal that out.
But if you're going to do that, you have to deploy that July, right?
No, we have to October 1, I think, don't we, for levy freeze? All of our lit revenue, I believe, is, I'll, I'll check that out, Chitlin. All other lit revenue is October 1.
I thought it was different for, for the thaw.
October 30th, actually. But I can check.
We're not collecting much.
But I, I, again, as I talked to you about earlier, I cautioned you on doing that because once you do that, then your levy, if, if your assessed values don't grow at the maximum growth quotient, then you start having cap losses. This county has no circuit breaker losses. In other words, your tax rates are not high enough to cause circuit breakers. If you're raising your levy on the property taxes, that's going to continually grow the rate on your tax rates to a point where then you're going to be charging more than you actually get. For those counties out there who have a tax rate of $2.25, on all farm ground out there, they lose a quarter of that tax rate. $2 is the max, that tax rate goes, so I'm not saying do or don't, I just want to caution you on the portions. This county has no tax circuit breaker losses. Crawford County has $289,000 in circuit breaker losses. That's revenue that they budget on that they never get because of circuit breaker losses. So I just look at the whole picture as you, as you do that.
So if you're not collecting enough, then we use a stabilization fund, except for your savings?
Right, if you wouldn't collect enough income tax dollars, you'd go over and pull it out of the stabilization fund. I don't think you have any in years.
You don't have any stabilization, so what?
You just pay the, you just get the lower amount. That's where your circuit breaker loss is, is in that lit revenue, is in that levy freeze. You don't have it on property taxes, you take yours in that levy freeze, but you, we budget knowing that.
So do you want to, or does the council want to talk about scheduling or do you want to have? Jackie, give us some dates and then we'll start setting up.
I'm open right now, I will tell you. I mean, most of my dates are open, there are some that have specific hearing dates, but as far as workshops per se, I'm going to have one county that's so hard to take.
So what do you feel would be, since you know our county, what would you feel most of our numbers and that would be available to us to start to do a schedule?
Well, Beth is probably having everything, she'll have everything in Gateway somewhere, I would venture to say by mid-July. I don't know when your Form 1s are coming in.
I gave them to July 2, I know they did July 1, so we gave them to December 1. So, and I need to input them, and I'll be on vacation a week, so.
You know, I, sometime in, sometime in, in August would be a good time to start looking at the picture. would be a good time to start looking at the picture. Whenever you want to hold your workshops with your, your people, we just need all the numbers in. Everything has to get certified to us around the first of July and the first of August. We should have most numbers and estimated revenues done by then.
Do you have a budget hearing maybe the first week in August? And maybe our session the third week in August?
Good.
Budget hearing the first week in August? And possibly our budget session the third week in August? The second week in August?
I'm going to presume y'all have your public hearing at your September meeting and your adoption hearing at your October meeting.
That's what we need to do.
Yeah. That's the easiest.
Is that too early or?
It's not too early, but I don't like the week in between because then you come to that third week in August and trying to recall the reasoning that the department head gave for certain line item or budget request is generally difficult.
I can tell you, a couple, but a couple of counties that I work with, they do it right there. They take a little bit longer with each department right there and they kind of do that conversation, we're going, you know, what can you give back, you know, why do you need this? And they sort of work the first work through right there. They make the changes right there where the department head is there.
That worked pretty good, huh?
Well, I mean, it's, it's a preference, a personal preference. I'd just say that's what some do. I have, I have two counties that do that. And then I have two counties that do what, do what you do. They see everybody and then they come back and they hash it. But even those counties that after, when they get done with the people and the new numbers are run, then they start right then working on getting back the rest of the numbers. They don't have that week gap in there.
So one's a hearing.
They meet with the beginning of the week with them and then the second part of the week is the council fine tuning that they're all getting the numbers in.
And I think at times that wouldn't make more sense because, you know, we may say, well, they not.
But we have all the way, I mean, we have all the way up to adoption to get to that point. We don't have to get it all done.
When is the October?
Your, what's your October meeting?
Our October meeting.
And remember, your auditor's conference. And you're at auditor's conference that week.
So budget hearings, I'm kind of trying to picture some of mine, would not be a two-day session. But we usually try to do it two days because that obviously would take a lot longer, so. But then it makes your other one shorter and more because you're more educated on each department at the time of what's happening. I kind of like that idea.
You don't have to do anything until September. I mean, that's totally, you're right, she's called. Except the week of September twentieth is the AIC annual conference and you won't want to miss it.
If we did the budget hearings like that instead of the first week of August and.
What, if you're wanting to do a, if you're wanting to have a conversation about material changes to payroll structure, like we, that, I, I don't know that, I mean, we're going to have to have a date. Just, yes. I mean, because we can't go in half-cocked talking to department heads not knowing the viability of any of these plans.
My next question is.
Here's where I was going with our conversation.
My next question would be, if we're talking about doing that, we need to make sure that things are advertised. So we would need to do it early enough that we are able to get it in, ready to go ten days prior to the public hearing, which will be probably the sixteenth of September. Would you, the third Tuesday, or third Thursday?
There's no final decision though, right?
No, but we have to advertise high enough to be able to, to be able to do something, so.
You can really get.
That kind of is, I guess you would say, I guess you would say Labor Day weekend is kind of our drop dead date. We need to know what you want to do on salaries by Labor Day or at least an idea so that we can have it in there and advertise ten days prior to your public hearing.
Carol, I mean, we could do a report at that time. She gave us that it was two percent, five percent, fifteen percent.
Right, those are across-the-board raises. It's much more labor intensive to look at them position by position and say, and look at tenure and take in all those considerations.
Well, and I would want to consider.
If you do a workshop at that time, it's not.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying. We had.
That was going to finish with. But you're not, you're not going to build longevity into their line item, correct?
I don't know what you're asking, Jackie.
Okay, when you say tenure, when you add for the tenure.
I'm going to read.
If, I call that longevity.
Yeah, it sure is.
Okay, and so longevity would be best for the salary ordinance if longevity is set in a line of its own and you get X number of dollars per year that's consistent. And then when.
What do you mean if the money's set in a line?
Well, longevity, it's paid, it's part of your salary, but like there's a longevity line.
In this department or?
And so Beth has five people and they get a hundred dollars a year. When she's filling out her Form One in that longevity line, she would put, person one has two years, that's two hundred dollars. Person two has five years, that's another five hundred dollars. Person three has six years, that's another six hundred dollars. Or however you do it, whatever rate you set. And that's in a longevity line.
In each department.
In each department. Because if somebody leaves, then they're going to go back to the base pay and that longevity will stay in that line.
Is there any counties that, instead of longevity, is there any counties that have just a base hiring pay? And then, no longevity, no five-year, six-year, ten-year. Then you, each year you get your cost of living or you get your county increase. This is what I want to bring to the workshop is that each department has a base pay higher end. Each department has a base pay higher end without longevity of the five-year, ten-year and then you're just up for your raises every year. So that in example, if someone does quit, has been here thirty, forty years, your new hiring will go down to the base pay and work their way up again in their life.
I have one county that does that because they're lack of efficiency.
To me, it makes sense.
They do it on an eight-year scale.
And it simplifies not having to do five-year, ten-year, ten-year. But it still, it still creates where they're going to get their raises every year, but it is a fairness of when somebody leaves their position. You're not hiring a, a new person to a position and they're getting the same as one to the first one.
It requires a lot of work there, so.
Exactly. And it needs to be done finally.
So that's what I'm saying, like you, you have to budget that time if you want to end that up before, so.
We didn't have our budget hearings until August nineteenth and twenty first year and we didn't have anything in the first of August. So I was just going back to, back to that. So Jackie could have like just a scenario of wages for at two percent, five percent, eight percent, ten percent for each department like she does in the breakdown. Then we could have a workshop go through that ahead of time and then do the budget hearings the first of August and do the informational budget hearing.
I don't see how it solves the core problem about Ben coming up with a whole new system for compensation. You have, you have to establish a base penny, right? So where would, what would?
Well, you do that in the workshop?
In the workshop with each of you.
No, I said we would do it before.
Before we meet with the department? So figures ten have a meeting like early August?
We could do that whenever.
Right.
We don't have that number to do that.
Right.
So, yeah.
And you could, you could put a committee together to put that together and then bring it in to the council as opposed to having to advertising at a forum. You could have a committee of three.
That way if there's questions.
Volunteers. And would not, and then you could call the meeting and bring it in to the forum. Because really, somebody needs to put it down on paper and have something for somebody to begin looking at. Is this where we want to begin? Is this what I thought? Is this what Ethan thought? And we're doing, you know? I'm a showbiz person. I absorb a lot better and comprehend a lot better when I have something to look at than just talking about it.
It is a big project, I know. I'm, I'm willing to do it for my people. You missed out. I asked the question of, instead of longevity, the five-year, ten-year, fifteen-year, just doing a base pay higher end for each department and then they just get their, so if someone leaves twenty years, then the department hires in at a base pay. And then each year they would get their raises.
And periodically, you would go, periodically you'd look at those base pays for those scales and keep them up with.
Cost of.
The cost of living periodically.
You don't need to get cost of living for.
I know, but I'm just saying, you don't want to set it and then never look at it.
What is, what do you consider the wages every year, the raises of the budget?
Well, they're not cost of living raises. That's just a comment. And it could, and it doesn't even have to be percentages. It could be set out that, you know, a chief deputy for now, it starts at this base and every year they get a hundred, five hundred, thousand, whatever increase. Doesn't have to be necessarily a percentage. It can be a flat dollar.
Also, we heard from every department, almost every department here that comes in here and with the wages that are going, you know, around us where I don't see how we can't do something where at least.
I know, so we just have, it has to be an effort to, to talk about the whole thing.
But you have to start working on it before you can come to numbers.
What working on it is for labor and the product work product is.
Yeah, you have to put a plan, which direction you want to go.
So when do you want to accomplish that?
Just on me or you have to committee or?
Shoulders.
I prefer there be a committee.
No one else has brought up, I mean, if you don't want to do it, that's, that's another thing. But I mean, I'm trying to engage your ideas, so.
I can agree with you as well.
You couldn't do it all together. I was just suggesting it might be three, a small group of three together.
How about Tracy Scott?
To start on it, then there is to pull everybody into a meeting every time you wanted to talk about it.
I mean, if, I mean, if nobody's on board with me, speak up.
Let's, let's do it, Commander Tracy. Scott, you, you, you?
You can only have three before you got a call or you have to advertise a meeting. You could have four at that point. You got four and you have to advertise.
I get it.
I said I'm willing to do it, so I can't speak for anybody else.
You said you got it. You said you. Yeah.
Then as soon as you get something pulled together, you can either bring it to the next meeting or call a special meeting. Just call. Any one of you can call a special meeting. You just have to let that know so she can notice it and advertise it. Right?
Yeah, you should.
Yep. Okay, we're worried to have somebody saying that we need to advertise the meeting under committee, so. Talk about that. No. If it's less than, if it's less than a quorum, talk about that.
Well, I, I think you already said that you, if it's less than a quorum, three people, then it doesn't need to be advertised. It can be, you're in accord. And then if one of those parties wants to call a special meeting, we notice it up just as we normally do and we have a, a meeting with the quorum.
Okay, I just wanted to make that clear.
Put it out here.
And I would say, I would say if, if, you know, our end date of when we need to know what direction we're going, needs to be that week before Labor Day so that Beth has time to get it into the computers on those salaries so we can advertise. And so we can advertise high enough to be able to do what you want to do. Right? I'm sorry, what did you say? I said we need it the week before Labor Day so that you have time to get it into Gateway, Harrison Gateway, so that we can advertise ten days prior to that sixteenth meeting. We'll have to, we'll have to hit Gateway on the sixth. We'll have to submit for advertising no later than the sixth of September, which is Labor Day. So we've got to take on, we've got to, we're going to, we're going to mark it on the third. When we take the regular.